So much for y'all continuing to have guys and get all of these people. So I kind of want to take what we have to do. That's really great work in the military. And I go out there with a message that I'm willing to surrender. And so I'm put this silent action effort there. I just saw, you know, I don't think they're, it's not, you know, long as it runs that, you know, after of our action will be dealt with. There is going to be payment and pick up your. So I put it on every card so that everybody will know, someone will give you questions. And I'm more sure than ever. I'm having a heart syndrome. I said, that's rich. I'm helping, I'm gonna make sure it's legit. It really is. And so I'm excited, I feel overworked because last week I was so tired.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, five thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing number one, old business.
An ordinance to approve zoning by Jometria Carter from R M dash two to M X dash C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Bowden and Webb Inc. dated twelve thirteen twenty nineteen concerning five zero eight South Range Road. Charles Barsher.
Um, the last communication I had with the Carters was a request to table this. Um, I understand that they have consulted an attorney and wanted to explore some options. I've not had any further communication with them since an email that I received yesterday. Um, and I don't see them in the audience.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on this item? All right. New business.
An ordinance to amend the code of ordinances regarding condemnation and demolition of unsafe buildings. Andre Cudre.
Council, I've had meetings with the building official, the building department to work on our demolition process. And as a result of those meetings, I've recommended a change to our ordinance. It more, it's intended to give them a clearer checklist of items to, for the demolition process. It basically moves state law into our ordinances. It removes what we believe to be an outdated reference to a demolition code, which has been somewhat of a confusion within the department. So it cleans that up. We think it'll make for a more efficient process within the department to be able to process demolitions.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on this particular item? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, five thirty two P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Diveterio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. My prayer, please. Eternal Father, we thank you on today. We give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise, we give you thanks on today. Father God, thank you just for who you are. Thank you, Father God, for another day's journey. Father God, we thank you for health and strength in our body. Father God, we thank you just for who you are. Thank you for allowing your son to die in our place. We ask you to continue to bless our city, state, and country, our city, state, and country leaders. Father God, I actually continue to bless this council, continue to bless their families, continue to give us the wisdom and knowledge to move forward, our city. I actually continue to bless their districts right now. Father God, I actually continue to bless our city administration, the staff, continue to bless our fire department, our police department right now. Father God, continue to cover them as they protect and keep us. We thank you for it all, that everything will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise because it belongs to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. By Pledge of Allegiance, I ask that all active and retired military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Can I get a?
An approval of our minutes from March eleventh, please, twenty twenty five?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
All right, final adoption of ordinance, old business, number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve rezoning by Jometry Carter from R M dash two to M X dash C in accordance with the preliminary plat by Bowden and Webb Inc. dated twelve thirteen twenty nineteen concerning five zero eight South Range Road. Charles Barsher.
Uh, as I indicated during the public hearing, um, I understand that the property owners requested this be tabled. Um, I haven't had any communication with them, uh, since yesterday morning, and I don't see them represented in the audience tonight.
I did respond back to that email this morning to inform them that this item would not be tabled. Uh, previous communication on March the thirteenth, that there were requests to have this item addressed on today. Also, in that same communication, it was requested that any information that would come from the neighborhood be provided to them via the twenty first of March, which I received on the twentieth. Saturday morning, I received an email that you were stating about this particular item being tabled. At this time, I make a motion to deny the request of the rezoning.
Second.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, new business.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances regarding condemnation and demolition of unsafe buildings. Andrew Co- Andre Cudre.
Thank you. Uh, council has explained, uh, as a result of meetings with the building official, the building department, we're recommending this change to the ordinance. We think it'll clarify things for the department, make it easier and more efficient, uh, to process demolitions. And we recommend approval.
Anyone from the audience have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council?
I'll just say thank you for cleaning this up, Andre, with the, uh, help of the, the city. This is something that's sorely needed. We look forward to moving forward with some demolitions for some properties that are desperately needed.
Yes, yes, yes. Anyone else from the council? You know, when we're gonna start tearing these houses down?
I, I will tell you, I did get a list this morning of some properties. They've requested that we do some abstracting of properties to start. So you'll be, see a list once we get the owners' names and notify them, yes, sir.
All right. Did you get a chance to ride over there on Mooney Avenue?
I did.
Thank you, sir.
I did.
Thank. Is anyone readiness?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Introduction of, introduction of ordinance, number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to request for a conditional use variance by Chris Ruffin to allow a mobile home in R S dash three zoning. The property is one zero six Alexander Road, located in District One. Charles Barsher.
Uh, as I say all the time, this is just the introduction. Um, if introduced tonight, there'll be a public hearing on this matter at the next council meeting. Um, this was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommended for approval. Um, the lot is currently, as I understand it, a vacant lot. The owner wants to put a mobile home on this lot, which we require a variance. Uh, and there are, um, some existing mobile homes in the area.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council? Any unreadiness? I make a motion to introduce. Second. No, I didn't have to say that.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve uncorked, located at two one one zero West Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one, to obtain an alcohol permit for a wholesale dealer. The owner is Frankian Fine Wines LLC. Charles Barsher.
My understanding is the owner has met all the requirements for the permit, and we've asked them here tonight to formally request it. Is there someone here representing?
Yeah, there's someone there, so. Did, did y'all notify him about it tonight?
He would have been notified, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution authorizing La Carreta, located at one zero eight Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, to close traffic to West Charles Street in front of the restaurant and in the south of the Casa de Fresa parking lot, Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five, from eleven A M. to ten P M., as well as authorizing La Carreta to obtain a waiver of the open container law for an annual Cinco de Mayo celebration, Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five, from eleven A M. to ten P M. in the closed area of West Charles Street in front of the restaurant and in the south of Casa Fresa parking lot. Kylie Payne.
Good question on this one. What is hyperlink? There's a map, and then there's an applicant, a waiver request form dated twenty twenty three, signed twenty twenty three. So I'm confused. Did they sign, did they fill out a new?
They have submitted a new, uh, request. Um, I'm not sure why this one's attached, other than I guess they were trying to show that they've done a similar event in the past. Um, I know the mayor has not signed the waiver request. He was, he was waiting for council approval. Um, I also know that there has been some discussion or concern about having these events go to ten P M. Uh, maybe eight, eight, eight o'clock P M. was suggested. So he asked me to kind of introduce that into the discussion.
Okay, well, due to the fact that it's the improper paperwork with the wrong date, I'm gonna make a motion to table this item until we receive the proper documents. Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number three.
A resolution to ratify and award bids received three thirteen twenty twenty five for baffle curtains, South W W T P and effluent system repairs. Award bid to low bidder, Mitchell Contracting, in the amount, excuse me, of two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. Um, I didn't have a project number, uh, Jay Pittman.
Good evening, uh, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we opened bids for the baffle curtain in Southwest Water Treatment Plan and Fluent System Repairs on Thursday, March the thirteenth. As you can see, uh, we received five bids. Our low bid is Mitchell Contractor, an amount of two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars and zero cents. Um, we do recommend award to Mitchell Contracting in that amount, and, uh, he has, or that particular contractor has performed work for the city, uh, in the past.
Is this within budget?
Um, yes, or a little bit, a little bit above, but, okay.
Tell us what a baffle curtain is.
Baffle curtain, it's, uh, so at the Southwest Water Treatment Plant, big aerated lagoons, the baffle curtains go in those lagoons, and it just basically reroutes, uh, the, the affluent, uh, for a little longer hy- hydraulic retention time, is what they refer to it as.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this particular item? Anyone else from the council? Any unreadiness? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jay. Resolution number four.
A resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with Tyser Ready Mix per R F P two six dash zero three, proposing pricing. Charles Barsher.
This was the, uh, Tyser was the low bidder on this, uh, R F P, our request for quotes. Um, we actually were able to negotiate down the trip charge. There was a, there was a higher trip charge than what we've typically paid. Um, we were actually able to negotiate that down with, uh, the contractor. So we're asking the council to approve this. Uh, and this would be for any concrete work that the city does. Um, we're paying basically for the cost materials, and then there's a trip charge, um, if they have to make multiple trips. Uh, it's very similar to contracts we've had in the past with other vendors.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye. Resolution number five.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the City of Hammond with rail technical services for railroad track, signal, and bridge inspections, and the estimated annual amount of thirty three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Charles Barsher.
This is the annual contract the city has, um, to provide inspections of the railroad spur that we own. Um, this is roughly what we've paid in the past, uh, and is offset to some degree by the revenues that we get from the use of the railroad spur.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this resolution? Anyone from the council? Yeah, one question. Charles, how many bridges they have in Hammond?
How many bridges? I don't have an answer for that. I can get that answer for you. Don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, and I know, uh, President Kip, he done brought it up several times. We had this street over caught on cross town. What's the name of this street, uh, President? Yes. No, not Cherry, it's, uh, Holly Street. Holly Street. Yeah. I'm saying, we can't keep talking about it. And I'm looking at everything else being completed, done, fixed, with no problem. And I know Kip done brought it up four times, I done brought it up two times. So what is the holdup on getting this road fixed?
We, are we talking about the crossing on Holly Street?
Yes.
I can check on this, but I, I, I want to say I've heard that that, that crossing is not part of the railroad spur. It's actually part of the C N rail line. But I can double check that to confirm that. I believe the spur starts past that, um.
Feet?
Yeah.
Feet facility?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Well, it's been brought up a good bit, so I mean, probably need to get the details. I, you know, Charles, if you can get that, I mean, it's been brought up for about six months or plus. So I mean, we probably should know the details by now, not just assume and think about it. So be nice to get the details figured out. You know which one they're, they're referring to, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
And so by you saying that, and I'm glad you brought that up, because we had set aside, we had set aside, we voted on to use money to fix the railroad spur, actually, to not even take money out the city budget. And so we still have a problem crossing over that track. So whoever is for. What you, can you give us something by next council meeting, please?
Yes, I will find out for sure by next council meeting if that is the city's or C N's. Uh, if it's C N's, we'll, we'll try to reach out to C N and see if we can get that, that crossing addressed.
I can help you out, it's C N.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've got net for with it. It's their track. The only thing I can't understand is you take a hundred and eighty seven steps in between that one to the one on Cherry Street, and you can ride right over it with no problem.
So, so which one is this one that they're referring to right now to?
The spur.
We're fixing the spur?
Yeah, the spur.
Yeah, so the, the contract here is, is a, we, contract, we have an annual contract to have a company that specializes in railroad tracks, inspect the track, um, the signals on the track and the bridges that are on this spur. Um, the, the question about why the, the crossing at Cherry is so smooth is in part because the state overlaid Cherry Street a few years back, before they turned it over to the city. Um, so they would have improved the roadway to and from that crossing. Now that you've confirmed that C N is the owner of the track at the crossing at Holly, um, I can follow up with the mayor. I, I know there was a conversation previously about, about this crossing. I just don't know where it is in process, so I can find it out before the next meeting.
And when is your contract need to be renewed?
I think this one's expiring soon. I don't have the exact date in front of me. Bear with me one second, I'm looking. I'm sorry, I don't have the date of the current contract expiration.
So would two more weeks hurt if we put it on hold? And let me tell you why I'm saying this here. We keep getting the same thing over and over again, every time we bring up Holly Street. So we still not getting a result done. I mean, I don't know if it gonna take, if we have to hold, and I, I notice it for a fact. Anytime you hold somebody money up, you'll get some act right. I do, I definitely know that. So will it affect them any kind of way? Now, I don't want no train to run off the track now.
Well.
We put this on.
So these would be two separate things. I mean, the, what, this, this contract is to assist the city in managing the railroad spur, the entire railroad spur. If, um, that crossing, as Councilman Andrews has indicated, is in fact on C N's portion of the line, but laying, renewing this contract isn't going to help that, that issue. That's a separate issue that, that, like I said, I know, I know there has been discussion about it before. I know the mayor was involved. Um, I just don't know where that discussion is. But we would need to reach out to C N if we haven't already and, and see how we can get that on their list of improvement projects. The other possibility is to budget for improvements to Holly Street, which would include that crossing, which would inquire, require coordination with the railroad. Um, but Holly Street is a city street. But that would mean the city paying for those improvements as opposed to.
And, and hold up, before you do that, we did General Pershing just trying to get a crossing, which we paid for all of that, and that was passed under Councilman Hood, and it just got done on the wrong side of the street last year. So we're talking, it took seven years after they got our money, because only C N will actually do the work. We can pay for it, but only they will actually touch their own tracks. So just doing Holly Street doesn't mean.
Right.
It's gonna happen, it's when they get to it.
Well, it needs to be on the list, I guess, in the first place, so I don't even think it's on the list.
I, I know, I know the crossing you're talking about. I actually have crossed it myself several times, going to and from Martin Luther King Park to the safe haven. Um, it is a rough crossing, as particularly compared to the one on Cherry Street. Um, again, approving this or tabling it, not approving it, isn't gonna really help with that issue. That's an issue that we need to follow through with, um, C N on. Oh, I just got a text from Jenna. She's saying that the contract expires June thirtieth.
But again, this contract has nothing to do with the crossing that we're talking about.
Correct.
Anyone else have any questions? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize the purchase of four twenty twenty five F one fifty five point zero liter crew cab four W dash D for the fire department from Bill Hood Ford. Total pro- sell price, one hundred ninety one thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars. State contract, four four zero 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 two three seven nine three. Charles.
I believe, uh, Chief Folks had previously emailed the council members, kind of explaining what's, what he's trying to do here. Um, the short version is, rather than purchase, um, fire trucks, he's trying to purchase less experience, expensive vehicles, pickup trucks that can be used in a response capacity. So three of these vehicles would become quick responsible, response vehicles. They would be equipped with E M S supplies. They would run in place of the large fire trucks. Um, they're also looking at using these to put out small brush fires. Um, one vehicle will be assigned to fire prevention to replace an older unit. That would be used for inspections and fire investigations.
So these trucks will carry water on them as well?
Yes, potentially, yeah. They have a small amount of water for, for brush fires. At least they're looking at that capacity, yes.
Stanley Campbell, Hammond. Um, for the administration, I got a question. What determines when a vehicle is no longer serviceable? Like, what's the policy on it?
So we have a garage, one of our departments is a city garage. They maintain all of the city vehicles. Uh, when it comes to police and fire vehicles, uh, the wear and tear on those vehicles, because they tend to run, I wouldn't say twenty four seven, but they run a lot more frequently than personal vehicles. Um, it's not necessarily about the age of the vehicle, it's really about how many miles it has on it, how well it's running, how expensive it is to replace parts.
Do we have a number? Do we have a ten to fifteen year number or a two hundred and fifty mile number that we're going by?
I think it varies per vehicle. I mean, I, we try to get as much useful life out of the vehicles as possible. I think ten years is probably about an average.
So there's no policy on it, though?
There, there are different policies for different departments. Um, the police department, for example, has a number of vehicles they purchase every year. But when we're looking at whether a vehicle is still usable or should be surplus, we're looking at a combination of factors, age, how much mileage it has on it, how much wear and tear it has on it. You know, a hundred thousand miles on a police vehicle or a firefighting vehicle is gonna be more taxing on that vehicle because of how it's used than a hundred thousand dollars on a vehicle that you or I might drive. You know, it might spend most of its useful life on highways and whatnot.
I ask that because it seems, a lot of times when I'm, when I'm sitting here, and I'm asking this question for a lot of the citizens, I know they have the same question, some people just don't like to ask it, because it seems, uh, I don't know, it's, it's weird to ask questions sometime. But, um, in this situation, if there's no policy, and you come up here and you're actually sitting in these meetings, a lot of times, um, just from fifteen minutes of me kind of looking over some of the other agendas, uh, March seventh, uh, the water and sewage department got two F one fifties. March seventh, the ground department got one F one fifty. March seventh, the street department got two F one fifties. February twenty fifth, the water and sewage got two F one fifties. Ground department got one F one fifty. Um, the street department got two F one fifty. At this point, if we don't have a policy, it kind of seems like we, we're kind of like on the Oprah show. You get a car, you get a car, you get a car, everybody get a car. And secondly, one of, one of my concerns right now is that the current administration, uh, they're here on maybe another year and a half, and a lot of times what happens is, I know in the military, in my military days, uh, anytime there was an outgoing commander, we put a lot of requisites in, right amongst the time where they were getting ready to head out. If we needed new equipment, that's when we actually pushed it through to actually try to get that new equipment. And that kind of seems like what's going on with this situation, since we don't have a policy on it. So I'd ask the, the council to be cognizant of that, so that we can be good fiduciary for, uh, the city's money and be physically responsible. And secondly, on these vehicles, uh, even if it's passed tonight, um, if the city can still come up and tell, I think, uh, Councilman Wells has been asking about the G P S for a long time. Every time we get a vehicle passed, and we still can't get an answer on it. That's all I have.
Um, speaking to the age of these vehicles, um, what, what Chief Folks is looking to replace is a two thousand eleven Tahoe, a two thousand thirteen Tahoe, a two thousand eight Tahoe, and a twenty eighteen, uh, Ford F two fifty. So, you know, these are older vehicles.
Twenty eighteen?
That's gonna stay in.
Twenty eighteen is gonna stay in service, uh, the other three would be replaced.
Okay, so he's not replacing twenty eighteen?
No, he's gonna keep that one in service. So we're talking about vehicles, um, you know, two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, that are being replaced. So as I said earlier, we try to get the maximum of use out of the vehicles. Um, both the fire and police do have a millage, so that they can buy police equipment. When, uh, Chief Folks was meeting with us to talk about these things, um, he pointed out that buying a new fire truck is, you know, a several hundred thousand dollar prospect. He's able to buy four vehicles for less than the cost of a fire apparatus. So, um, this is, this is about trying to be good fiduciary constituents or custodians of, of our taxpayer money, making sure that we're not spending money on a fire, fire truck to go out to put out a brush fire, when we could do it with a, with a pickup truck.
That brings me to another question. Has it been done before? Have we ever purchased these trucks for that purpose? these trucks for that purpose before?
I, I believe we have. I can't point to a particular example. The Tahos have been used typically by the administrative staff and by fire prevention. They don't need fire trucks to go out and, and do some of what they need to do. So I, I know we've looked at doing exactly what he's doing with these, these trucks before. In fact, we had pursued some grant funds about two years ago to actually purchase the equipment that would be used to outfit the trucks. That grant application was not successful.
Chief Fokes sent all of us by email, a lot of information that you're asking about Stanley. One, one of those questions is, you know, why trucks? And he says that it can, four-wheel drive trucks would allow them to have expanded capabilities for grass and wood fires. Also, the trucks allow them to put the combustion equipment outside of the cab, thereby reducing exposure to carcinogens, so that seems like a good reason. He gave us a lot of really good information about the mileage of the three vehicles that are being retired, which are the quick response vehicles. So instead of, and he gives some information about how much money on maintenance that they're spending every year, versus how much maintenance would cost if they implement the fire truck for quick response vehicles. So all of this is super helpful to us. I think it probably would have been helpful had we linked this, so that people who are watching this and want to know, probably every one of your questions other than that policy question, would be answered with this really helpful information.
On, on the policy, is there a way that we can develop a policy? Because when, I know coming up here in probably a couple of months, you guys are gonna be focused on a budget for the next fiscal year. How do you budget for something just like this here? Like, we sit in these meetings, and these trucks are just popping up. Is there a way that we can actually come up with a schedule? If they have a policy, and we can look at the odometers, we can kind of see what's coming up and what's gonna be on the budget come for the next fiscal year? And you can actually budget for it, versus it kind of being a shock and awe in meetings like this here, when you're just seeing vehicles and vehicles and vehicles and vehicles. You kind of know when it's gonna be coming.
Yeah. I, I think that, that makes sense. I know that when we have our budget work session, so that's in June, right, and then, well, here we are in March, we budgeted for a lot of the vehicles that you were talking about. We talked about them in June, saying, because what they had was being used, and they know it was about to be retired, so we learned about it in June. And so sometimes maybe we forgot that we've already talked about it, but it's not a surprise, because we actually budgeted the money for the trucks that you're talking about in June. Now, there's certain times when a truck is wrecked or something like that, and that seems more like a, you know, an unknown expense, and obviously that comes up. But I find that we have pretty good knowledge many, many months in advance, that, that the administration is gonna ask for, for vehicles. And like he's saying with the, the police department, that happens every year, we seem to be asked, and, and they explain what we're rotating out. It does seem like, I agree, that we've bought a lot of vehicles lately. But again, we did talk about that in June, and gave, give us a heads up. And I don't think you could do a citywide policy as to when to retire vehicles, because your police vehicles have much different usage than your code enforcement guys, right? And those, they, they drive those things into the ground for many, many years before they're replaced. But I think it's a good idea to kind of put something in, some guidelines in there, maybe with the help of the garage of, after we're spending this much money on repairs consistently, it's time to put it in the pipeline for replacement.
And I, I want to be clear, it's not that we don't have policies, it's that we have several different policies depending on if it's police or fire, or streets or water and sewer, the vehicles get used very differently. But we could work toward, I think, you know, coming up with a clearer policy, or at least explaining more clearly what we're doing and why we're doing it. The, the other thing is the timing. We're, we are coming up on the end of the fiscal year, I know June 30 seems like it's a long ways away, but typically, you'll, you'll see these larger purchases, sometimes made later in the fiscal year, because we want to make sure that, one, we're getting the maximum use out of the equipment or vehicles that we have before we go buy something new. And, and two, we want to make sure that we're not, we're not spending money that might be needed for some type of emergency or unexpected expense. So that's part of the reason why you're seeing a lot of these purchases coming now. It's also state contracts, state contracts tend to get renewed kind of around this time of year. So that's part of the reason why you're seeing a lot of these come up now.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for asking that question. You asked more question than the city councilman asked. And I think that was very good. My opinion is, the department heads, so the councilman and, and Mr. Charles, trying to blow smoke up you. If the department heads was here, they can answer that question for you, better than any of us. Because what you just said, and, and I thank you for saying that, I've been asking for tracking device for the longest. You know, from the, the stump grinder got stolen, and they was able to recover it. Tracking device will help out, where you'll know all the vehicles at. But somehow we keep playing like we gonna do it, like we gonna do it. Wasn't nobody gonna say nothing about tracking device on these trucks. Wasn't nobody gonna say nothing about the price of these trucks. Only thing we supposed to do, honestly, for yes. That's all we supposed to do. But thank you so much, and Charles, I'm glad you said that. We talk about the budget, yeah, everybody put in stuff. All the department head putting things for the budget. But yet the councilman in your district, you the last one to ask what you need. And each one of us deal with so many people in our district. And I show hope we do better this year, with the budget coming up. And so why we trying to hurry up and spend a lot of money? And like you said about the military, when you about to change, when you about to change our, our leadership, you see a lot of stuff being thrown out. And since you brought that up, I'm glad you did. If you go back and look when Mason Foster was in office, wasn't no police cars bought, wasn't none of that bought, everything they made work. And now, 10, at least 10 vehicles every year we buying, but that's what, nobody can sit here and tell us how many vehicles from the police department are being towed up, totaled out. And so, thank you so much, and hopefully you educate us as councilpeople to start asking more questioning about these vehicles and everything. And, and I know the fire chief, I know him pretty good, he don't mind coming here speaking about this here. And he will be able to tell you himself way more information than Gonzalez, me, Sam, Kip, Steve, and Charles can give you, because he deal with it every day. And so when he pretty much asks for something, he always be, he the only ones I could say, he be straight up. And he don't be lying. Now, the rest of, I ain't gonna say about them. But the, the fire chief, he's pretty good. And so if he asks for something, honestly, I have no problem voting on what he asks for, because he will tell the truth. Thank you so much, and hopefully you start asking more hard questions, and watch the frowns on the councilman's face when you ask questions. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Anyone else on this resolution? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Yes.
Councilman Divatario?
Yep.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number seven?
A resolution accepting a $250,000 grant from Tangeful Parish Government for improvements to West Minnesota Park Road. Number two, approving a cash match of up to $370,000 from the Grant Match Fund. And number three, authorizing the mayor or his designate to complete and sign related documents. Charles Barsher?
This is the section of West Minnesota Park Road that is west of Southwest Railroad that leads to the mall, Home Depot, that area. It's, it's gotten in really bad shape. I think we originally were trying to get this budgeted about two years ago. We're trying to get it repaired ahead of the holiday season. I know that seems like a long way off, but, but this is a fairly large undertaking. There's a lot of traffic signals, lighted intersections in that area that have underground sensors that we need to accommodate when we redo the road. The mayor was able to work with the parish, and they're gonna grant us $250,000 toward this project. We're looking at doing it with concrete, that is the preference of the administration. Total cost would be $620,000. We take out the, the parish amount, 250, that leaves the city to have to come up with $370,000. And we do have that available in the Grant Match Fund. So we could, if the council proves tonight, we could expedite the design engineering component of this, get this bid out, get this constructed ahead of the holiday season.
This in District 3, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all like to table this here? Because I think we all need to sit down and talk more about this here, because you all suggesting concrete, I'm suggesting line, I'm suggesting uh,
Asphalt?
Asphalt, thank you.
That's correct. We, we did get an asphalt price, Spangler Engineering did get us an asphalt price. Is Jay still here? I know Jay wants to come and speak to this. The asphalt price was estimated to be $465,000, so less money. The preference is concrete because of, it's, it's gonna last longer.
Mr. Wells, to, to your question there, to your statement, I like to tell people that we, we rent asphalt and you buy concrete, the, the, the concrete will hold up a whole lot longer, has a longer usable lifespan than asphalt, and is, which is why the mayor wants to pursue the, the concrete, and that would be our recommendation as well. Similar to what we did on, on Mary's Alley, in similar fashion there, that concrete will hold up for many, many years. So that's why we're, we're, we do recommend a concrete solution there.
Okay.
It's heavily traveled, very heavily traveled, and so that's why we, again, we stand on the, the concrete recommendation.
Okay, I'm gonna say it again. I would like to table this here matter, so we can talk more about it in a meeting. Because what's going on, I can't sit here and vote on this right now. We have a problem. And so I reached out to, to Mr. Chuck, I talked to Mr. Chuck, I reached out, I went to the mayor's office yesterday, he wasn't in, so I wanted to talk about it before this even come up. And then, I'm glad you said that. Mary Alley, y'all recommend asphalt. I'm not saying you, but the company recommend asphalt for a concrete street. Now, this is an asphalt street, and now we recommending concrete. So I would like to table this here matter, until we all can sit down and come up with a better solution on how we gonna do this.
And I would be remiss if I didn't let you and the council know that any further delay potentially pushes us into the holiday season of not getting completed, just for your, for your.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no problem, yeah. And, and once again, I done had so many holidays to pass by in my district, where things haven't get, haven't been received, haven't been done, or nothing. So we gonna get it done, but right now I'd like to table this. So thank you.
Is this asphalt, or is it concrete?
It's currently asphalt.
Okay.
Any more questions, Campbell?
No, I wanted to ask about, uh, did, I had a meeting with the mayor and Charles a while back on Alida Drive about getting a price on asphalt down Alida Drive, because that one's been needing to be redone for a while. And you remember meeting with you a while back, Charles and all, and brought that up, and I think even the mayor made a comment about possibly getting the bids and all, and seeing if they could do it to the same time as Minnesota was done, when it gets done. So I wanted to follow up on that, to see where we at on, did y'all ever get a price on that at all?
I have not seen a price for Alida. I, I want to say that's in, don't hold me to this, but I want to say, was that, was that one of the projects we discussed that's in the next year's fiscal?
Well, it's been talked the last couple of years now, and, and we, you know, Tina was bad, and then we went ahead and, and we're talking about trying to get Alida, but it kept getting, kept falling off.
Right.
And, and so that's kind of what, you know, when I talk, had that meeting, that was brought up in that meeting about possibly getting a price from Chuck's office, Fingers' office, just trying to see if that would even be feasible, like to, to group it together.
Yeah, I think Charles correctly wrong, but the majority of the overlays are asphalt roadways usually coupled into parish roadway packages as well.
Yeah, I don't remember.
We were told that by the administration that the parish wasn't doing any of the asphalt for a couple of years. So that's, that's why we were doing them. I think we did the last one. So Alida's been in there, we've been brought up several times, and parish doesn't have any money for that street, so.
I got, I got a note jotted down to get you a price on it.
That'd be good, because we've been jotting that note down for a while on that street. And so I'd like it to get an answer sometime. We, I brought it up to you before, and I met with you several months back, and Charles and everyone else. I, I'd love to get that price.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is this grant from the parish, is it contingent on it being asphalt, or do they?
I think they left that up to us. If, if the price, if we wanted to do concrete, and it's a higher price, we still have to come up with, you know, the, the match, as it were. I do know that the mayor is really wanting to get this done. So while, while the administration's preference is concrete, you know, if it's getting it done before the holidays or not getting it done, that's kind of where we're at, and that's what I'm hearing from Chuck Spangler. I think we would entertain the asphalt option, knowing that we'll probably have to go back and replace it in the future, which is why we didn't, we didn't present that as the desired option.
Don't use the word entertain, because we're not entertaining. So I'm gonna say it again. I would like to table this matter. This here was brought up, not two years ago, it was brought up during the budget meeting last year, so it wasn't two years. So I would like to table this here matter, and we can all sit down and discuss this more. That's what I would like to do. This is, this is in District 3, and the road is in bad shape. We know it's in bad shape, and it definitely need to be replaced. But right now they have other things. Martin Luther King Drive, it need to be replaced. Washington Avenue, it need to be replaced. So we can't just sit here and talk about one street, it's several street. Uh, Lincoln Park, it need to be replaced. Holly Street, it need to be replaced. Uh, uh, Second Avenue, it need to be replaced. Haskins Street, it need to be replaced. I can give you 15 streets. And I just called out two other districts, but I can give you 15 streets in my district that haven't been replaced in three years. So could we table this matter? Or we gonna keep going about it?
I, that's the council's prerogative. The only thing I will add to the discussion is that this is a situation where we have the parish willing to give us $250,000 to do this street. So that, that's why we're trying to make this project go.
Council, Councilman Wells, wouldn't you wanna, you wanna have a meeting with someone in particular?
Yes. I'd like to have a meeting with you, Mr. Charles, with the mayor, with Chuck Spangler Group, Robbie Miller, Joe Thomas, Lonell Wells, because this in his district also.
Hold up one second for me, Jay. I make a motion to table this item?
Second.
Counsel, excuse me, Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
I have one question, Jay. Do you guys have any idea, the, there have been any discussions about any roads being overlaid or anything this year? I know the parish was in control of doing some of that.
I'm, I'm not sure of the status of the parish's roadwork, that's for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Resolution number eight?
A resolution supporting the submission of a $50,000 application to the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program for improvements to the Miller Memorial Library. Charles Barsher?
This is an opportunity that we have to apply for a $50,000 grant from T-Mobile for the Miller Memorial Library. There's no match requirement. The Miller Memorial Library is the, the building that's adjacent to Lee's Drive-In, behind Lee's Drive-In, it's on the corner of South Pine and Morris. It's a city-owned building. We've, we've got grants in the past to do some exterior renovations. We're actually hoping to complete the last phase of grant-funded exterior renovations over the next couple of months. The next major component of that building's renovation is the interior, and this is an opportunity for us to not have to spend city dollars to do that interior work. This will bring the building, we hope, back into commerce in a bigger way. It's, it's being underutilized now, it's in need of a lot of TLC. And again, this is a way that we can do that without costing the taxpayer any money.
Anyone have any questions on this particular resolution? Number eight? Anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Report?
Andrews, Councilman Andrews, the, the folks from item number one in resolutions are here for the meeting that was, that was tabled because they were not present. And they, they arrived just shortly after actually the item was tabled. That's item number one, that's the request for the, uncourt, to obtain an alcohol permit.
Okay. Go ahead, I'll take you.
Hey, Mr. President, I'd like to ask, I'd like to.
Hey, Mr. President, I'd like to ask, I'd like to, uh, ask permission to ask a question, um, from the administration for something that, um, I would hope to have on the agenda for next meeting, if I could, with your approval. Um, does the administration have a crisis response, any type of crisis response team?
We have the special response team that's part of the police department.
That, that, okay, so the police department does have a crisis response team?
It's, yeah, special response team, yes.
Okay, that's kinda, that's kinda what, 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 where I'm going. On February eighteenth, we had an issue where, uh, Mr. Bobby McCaskey, um, he was injured while in custody of the Hammond Police Department, and during that, uh, February, February eighteenth meeting, um, there were phone calls to a couple of city council meetings, I mean, members, and one of the family members came and they had some questions that they wanted to ask, but they weren't able to, 'cause, uh, they came later on. So, I guess my, I guess my question is, if we can, uh, ask the chief of police to give us an update on this situation. Uh, the chief of police kinda got on, uh, one of the local media outlets.
Action Seventeen.
Yeah, and his comment, uh, in response to that situation, instead of giving an answer to what occurred, he stated that this is what happens if you run from the police. For those who don't know, Mr. McCaskey was, um, he was on life support, uh, for maybe, I wanna say maybe for two weeks, and I wanna see if we can actually get this police chief to provide some form of an answer, because we still haven't heard an answer from him, and right now it's one of those situations in our community where these situations, they die now. Whenever the anger and the people want answers, whenever that goes away, the answers don't come out. So basically, that's what's happening right now. They're just letting it die now. So my, my request to the council is, if we can get with the administration and have Chief Burgeon Ron to come here and to face the public. Um, he's a public official, he should be able to come to one of these meetings and face the public. When Hammond PD needs money, they come up here and they talk to the public and they ask for money, you know what I mean? The sheriff right now, he needs money. He's, he, he's shown up to several events that I've been at, he showed up to several organizations that I've been at, but in situations like, uh, this one, it's crickets, you know, so that's my ask from the council. If we can get with the administration to have him come here and answer some questions for the public, to give us some clear, some clarity on it. Um, and that's it.
Mr. Campbell, I ask you a question. What, what he said on Channel Seventeen?
Said on, on Channel Seven, his, his words, this is what happens if you run from the police.
Oh my God.
They're, they're stating that, they're stating that he, they're stating that he was, uh, he was tased and he fell on his face. Now, I've seen some of the, some of the photos, I wasn't there, and they're not releasing the, the body cam videos or anything like that. And that leaves the, the community and that leaves the public to their own thoughts, and they come up with their own, uh, understanding of what happened. So, I'd like to have him come here before the council and before the citizens and actually explain exactly what happened, if that's possible.
I agree with you a hundred percent on it. I did follow up with those same questions by email, and I got the same response that was verbally given on Action Seventeen in my email, uh, give or take a little bit. And that has been one of my concerns as well, and I followed up with another one behind it, because you leaving this wide open like that.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we don't need all of those outside issues or anything. If, just tell the people what's going on or where you at in the situation, and I'm quite sure we could work with that. But I, uh, I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that.
Yeah, and I, I didn't even wanna speak, I know it's divisive, it's, it's a situation that's divisive and nobody wants to deal with divisiveness, but this is one of those situations where I think he needs to come, uh, before the congregation.
Mr. Campbell, real quick, just to clarify, so when you asked about a crisis response team and I said there's a special response team, two different things. I think what you're asking for is there, within the administration, within the city, um, a group of individuals who would address instances like this, circumstances like this, provide information to the public. Um, the special response team is essentially like the SWAT team, right? They, they respond to a law enforcement type thing. Um, I'm not gonna paraphrase the chief, I think that the quote you're providing is not the whole quote.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would encourage anyone who has access to Action New Seventeen or any of the coverage to go and look at the whole quote.
I, I think the whole thing was distasteful regardless of.
Thank you.
If there was more added to it, it was distasteful the way that, I honestly, I don't even know what happened. I sat there and I watched it in my home with my kids, and I was in a total different zone. I'm in a loving environment with my family, and I'm watching this on my phone and it put me in such a, it put me enraged, you know what I mean? That somebody, that's somebody's family that's laying up in a hospital bed fighting for his life, and the person who, who can provide the answers to the questions that everybody's thinking, instead of him answering the question, he adds more rhetoric to it. You know what I mean? It, it, it was frustrating watching, and that's my police chief, and I, I guess that's my frustration. But your question actually brings, brings me closer to another question that I had. When we were here on this meeting, um, the mayor stated that he knew nothing about this. I find that really, really strange, and I wish the mayor was here, 'cause I wanted to ask him that question. How can the mayor of the city in a situation where there's an officer-involved event, where the mayor is not the first point of contact for that leadership role? So basically that, whoever it was who took that guy down or whatever he had to do to subdue, uh, to subdue him, when his sergeant or his lieutenant found out about it and this guy's in the hospital, the first call that should've been made was to the mayor. So the mayor's being blindsided by a serious, a serious event, you know what I mean? That's why, that's why I'm asking about a crisis response team, because we're here in a city council meeting. I think that, that city councilman should've got a phone call, the mayor should've got a phone call, we should've known what was going on, and, uh, I'm in Kip's district, so when I ask Kip what's going on, if he knows what's going on, the fact that he doesn't know what's going on, it makes it seem like he's not doing his job. You know, you know what I mean? And that's why I think a crisis response team is important. Even when you guys are in these meetings just like this here, things are still happening on the outside, you guys still gotta be tapped in.
Mr. Campbell, thank you again. I'm gonna say this here, Mr. Campbell. You say that other guy, who was that other guy you say be going all the meetings? For the sheriff department, what's his name?
Stickler.
Stickler? He was elected by the people, huh?
He was.
That's the problem we having. This chief here is not elected by the people, so guess what? He don't have to speak to nobody but the mayor. That's why he can say what he want on, what's that station, Channel Seventeen? That's why he can say what he want on Channel Seventeen, 'cause you know what? He's not elected by the people. So anytime you appointed, your friend, your friend can do anything they want and won't nothing take place. Thank you so much for bringing that up, 'cause you know, in my community, which pretty much similar to that, we had a shooting. His nephew, alleged nephew, shot a guy in the mouth, and guess what? Oh my God, who said that? Don't you say that that loud. Yeah, but that's what's taking place. We keep having these little incident taking place, and I tell everybody this here. When it affect your house, when it affect your family, then what? Anytime, whether it's white or black, it don't matter about the color, somebody need to address the issue. We spend thousands, thousands of dollars on body cam. Nine times out of ten, we might not even find this on a body cam. Thank you so much. The people need to know what's going on. Thank you.
President, members of the council, Chris Young, behalf of Franconia Fine Wines.
So, Council, what I think the process would be, if you'd wanna entertain it, you'd have a motion to reconsider item number one under resolutions, 'cause you've already voted to table, so you'd have to have a motion to reconsider it.
I have a motion to reconsider it.
Second.
I just wanna apologize.
Hold on, one second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, we, we arrived about five forty, we read the agenda, and I thought it started at six. It does say six, so when the public hearing ends, I didn't realize the council was so efficient, so, uh, we, we were a little bit behind, but, uh, I apologize, uh, for, Councilman, we're here for something I believe is in your.
Yes, it is, yeah, and I saw you come in, I didn't, I didn't realize that was you, but we were moving kinda fast tonight, so it's, it's good, yeah.
It's a wholesale business, there's no on-premise consumption of alcohol, it's strictly a.
It's like a distribution, uh?
Distribution warehouse, and, and no one comes to the property.
Okay.
Uh, the, the public doesn't come, you know, to shop or anything.
Okay.
So it's not a store where people can go in? Oh, I see.
You're just distributing out of the warehouse, I guess.
The bars and restaurants and grocery stores.
Okay.
Where's the location? What?
It's on, uh, West Thomas, twenty-one-ten West Thomas.
Was that, uh, the bedding place before that has some bedding mattresses, I think, yeah?
Yeah, it's in the back there, so.
Oh.
And I, I would note, uh, that this business moved from New Orleans to.
Okay, so y'all have another location or this is just relocating?
Entire warehouse to, to hear from New Orleans.
Glad, glad, uh, you settled in my district in Hammond, so.
We appreciate the consideration.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I wanna thank the city attorney for, I, I said, oh, something's wrong here, 'cause I was, saw how far along you were, so.
Yeah, no doubt. Thank, thank you, welcome to Hammond, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone from the public having any questions or concerns on resolution number one? Pleasure to the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Thank you, sir, for bringing them tax dollars to Hammond. Probably get some roads done now, yes.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrew?
Aye. Reports?
Yeah, I got a report. I wasn't gonna say nothing, but I'm gonna say it. Uh, I have my little nephew from the military, he decided to show up, he watch us on YouTube all the time. Thank you for serving our country. That's it for me.
Any other council reports?
I have a question for Charles, if you guys can look into it. Yesterday, there was a really bad accident on Old Covington and Cherry, and I've gotten two emails from people asking, I mean, they want a red light there, I don't think that's feasible, given the proximity to the railroad, but rumble strips, I don't think, I don't, something along those lines. I haven't seen rumble strips in the city, and then also the lighting is not great there, so that people can realize that there's a stop sign, and, um, apparently a car flipped over all the way on its side, and that location, they've also run into a house that's on that corner, so that is a problem if y'all would pull traffic records and maybe come up with a way to help people realize they're supposed to stop right there.
Any other reports?
I wanted to ask a quick question. I, I had one of my constituents ask about the hazardous weight, the hazardous waste, um, um, hazardous waste pickup, the medical, would they pick up medical oxygen tanks in, in that? Do you know off the top of your head? If not, can you, can you find out for me?
I can find out.
On that pickup for the hazardous?
I, that question's come up before and I don't recall the answer, but I can, I can get an answer for you.
Alright, I appreciate it.
The metal oxygen.
Yeah, the, the medical oxygen tanks, they didn't know if they would be accepted or not.
Do you have a report from the mayor, Charles?
I do not, he's recovering from a minor injury, which is why he's not here tonight.
I just have one. To actually piggyback off of what he was saying earlier, and I just sent an email about this, uh, the incident that took place Saturday in MLK Park. Uh, I talked with Desiree today, uh, dealing with the park rangers and everything about the safety of their concern, and, uh, waiting to see actually when the officers will start sitting in the parks, uh, since it's getting ready to start warming up. But I did make a comment with Desiree that, uh, moving forward, I think that we could do a, a little more with the screening process for allowing the pavilion and stuff to be used. I'm in a place right now that, that the safety of the citizens in my community, the safety of the park rangers as well is a high concern of mine, uh, at this point. Uh, so I've wanted to get in further discussion with Desiree within the next couple of weeks, probably pausing any activity going on in the park until we can get everything in place, making sure that we have security, making sure that those folks that do fill out the application is stating that for, uh, not, uh, I think it's less than thirty people, you do not have to have police presence, uh, in the park to make sure that even the, the park rangers that would have this information if they pass by there and the crowd is bigger than thirty, that they shut it down. Uh, so I know a lot of people gonna be mad about it, but I take that hit like I take all the other hits, but at this point right now, if somebody kid would've got hurt, you know, I'd get another phone call, just like the phone call I get probably tonight, why you wanna stop the stuff in the park? But next week, something happening in the park, and to be your child, you gonna be calling me, asking me why I didn't do anything. So we need to try to put some preventative measures in place, uh, and I'll be back in contact with Desiree on it, but, um, suspending anything that anybody has requested do in the park up until I know that we can have the proper measurements play, in place, uh, that's why I'll be. I did send an email on that earlier, connected with everybody, even I wanted to know from the chief where things were going, and unless somebody just emailed me right now with, uh, hadn't heard anything. But I did talk with Desiree, 'cause she called me herself about another issue, and we discussed it. So that's where, uh, I am with that, and we need to make sure we have some good measures in place, because it's starting to warm up and they're gonna start hanging out in the park.
Right. I, I did, the mayor was in briefly this morning, I did speak to him about this. Um, he indicated to me that we typically have the, the police start patrolling the parks, um, in April, like around the beginning of the spring, summer. Um, I can tell you that we're also looking at quotes for new security cameras in that park. Um, so unfortunately, this incident happens before those things are in place, but, uh, hopefully, you know, the new cameras will be in place, at least some of them will be in place before the end of the fiscal year, and we'll have police start patrolling the parks, not just MLK, but all the parks, um, in April.
So, Charles, I ask you a question. I'm glad you brought that up. We install cameras in the park, so what's wrong with the cameras in the park?
The cameras in that park are older cameras, um, they need to be upgraded to newer cameras.
How, how old are the cameras? I'm sorry, how old are the cameras?
The cameras that I'm looking at replacing around the safe haven are, I think we purchased them twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
No, 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 no.
This is before the council started asking for.
I, I know, no, no, I'm not talking about safe haven. Martin Luther King Park, what about the cameras in Martin Luther King Park?
I can't speak to any other cameras in the park, I can only tell you that we're looking at upgrading the cameras around the safe haven to cover the north end of the park.
If I'm not mistaken, Vex, I think we gave them seven thousand dollars for internet to install cameras in the park.
Well, that's on one, yeah, I think in, in mine too, ten, mine.
Mine's too, yeah, and so, and I'm glad you said that about the cameras. Clark Park, we had a fire in Clark Park, but it's so quiet. Like Mr. Campbell say, these things take place, but nobody even talk about it. We had a big fire in Clark Park, some of the structure caught a fire. I wanna know about the insurance. The cameras in the park, are they being monitored? Because, I'm gonna say this here, in Mooney Park, this what I asked for. You and I talked a whole lot, don't install nothing, don't put no new playground equipment in the park until you install cameras. That's where you don't have to replace the equipment. Same thing in Sam Park, Jackson Park, you had a fire in Jackson Park. What sense do it make to buy this equipment? If the city can't monitor these cameras, are they being recorded? Are the cameras just up there, dummy cameras or what? Because we sat here and paid all this money for the internet to have these cameras in the park, so what's going on? Please tell me something.
Or they, is Jackson Park being monitored and up and running?
Yes, Jackson Park is being monitored, it's up and running, and can, in fact, I know from speaking with Rick in IT, he's had to go out there a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, because we've had kids go up and knock the camera with a trash can or a stick. They've tried to hit it for some reason, I, I don't know why, they're on camera. Um, Jackson, uh, so Jackson's up and running, Mooney Avenue is up and running. We did have an incident last year where I think, um, the internet relay was struck by lightning, so it was down for a little bit, but that's been repaired.
Are we catching anybody on these cameras? Like, you know, the, the, on the camera, I mean, are we, are we getting any of them? Are we just, you know, watching them? Like, what I mean is, we, we gotta. watching them? Like, what I mean is, we, we gotta catch some of them, I guess, eventually, that on these cameras, huh?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the camera, the cameras are being monitored. They're, they're active. Um, they are capturing things. Like I said, with the, the one in Jackson caught a couple of kids, you know, messing with the camera. We went out and readjusted it.
So, what happened to the kids? That's what I want to know. What happened to the kids?
I mean, in that case, I think they were, they didn't do any damage, so we didn't, we didn't, like, send the police after them. But, but if, if the cameras, if the kids are observed doing something damaging, um, the cameras are being monitored. The one in Clark, um, unfortunately, did not capture enough information for the fire. We had our Fire Prevention Bureau go out and solicit video for some of the neighbors, um, and I think that was, that was kind of used to kind of build the case. Um, the, the young man who set fire in Jackson Park, um, was recently convicted of that. Um, uh, right now, we're kind of considering the restitution question, if, if he or his family have to pay restitution to the city for the damage that was caused. This playground equipment is very expensive.
So, they did catch Jackson Park?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And it's not-
Ain't never told me.
Correct, correct. Playground equipment, unfortunately, we can't get insurance for. Um, we, we've kind of, I, I first learned about this after Hurricane Ida, because we had some equipment that was damaged by the hurricane. The insurance companies don't insure playground equipment. They'll insure structures, buildings, but they won't insure playground equipment.
So, who the cameras are being monitored to?
Uh, the feed goes to the police department. The police department has, um, the dispatch has a, a wall of monitors, and the monitors have different cameras on them.
So, let me say this here. And you know, pretty much when I say something, I already know. The cameras in Clark Park, the trees, the limbs was denying you from seeing it. So, now that we know that, how the limbs been cut in Clark Park?
I don't know that answer. I, I, I have spoken with IT about looking at the placement of some of the cameras and seeing if we can adjust the placement. I, I think there was a different thinking when the cameras were first put out, like what we wanted to capture. And so, the cameras are looking at things like the restrooms, right? Because we thought that was like the big investment in the park. Um, but there are ways to position cameras. So, you're capturing the restrooms, you're capturing the playgrounds, you're capturing basketball courts and pavilions and whatnot. So, we, Rick and I are actively talking about the cameras in the parks and how we can make the cameras work better for us. Um, some of the cameras that were purchased a couple of years ago, three years ago, they're older cameras that, that aren't, aren't the latest cameras we're putting out. They, they work on a different system, so we're trying to bring everything under, uh, under the same system so that we can send all of the feeds to the police department and make sure that the cameras are working for us.
Okay, Charles, I don't know if you know, them same cameras them police is be wearing, them the same cameras, I want to see they teeth in they mouth. I want to see everything. Anytime these kids or grown up, whoever, I don't care who it is, anytime you do a damage to the park equipment, something need to take place. I'm not gonna sit here and I say it on the record. I'm not patting nobody on the hand. Anybody doing a damage to the park, they need to be put in jail. Your parents can't pay no money back, because they ain't made no money. Parents ain't got no money. But something need to take place. Let them go get the police station.
Or it's gonna keep happening?
Yeah, it's not gonna stop. So, now we just wasting taxpayers' money, and we keep not doing nothing. And when things happen in the park, because this, this is what I wanted the cameras for. If somebody molests a kid in Mooney Park, any park, I want them in jail. That's my concern. Are the little kids going to the park? I didn't have this issue when I was growing up, but now you can't trust nobody. We need to be concerned as if it's your damn child. The city would do better if it's their child, if something was happening to their kids. That's what we need to do. Act like it's your child. Act like it's your cousin's child. Act like it's somebody's child in your family, and we'll see a big difference. The park probably be the safest place you go. The park and the church. Please, we can't keep coming up with excuses. Uh, I don't know, uh, uh, the limbs, I asked what the limbs cut. If you know the limbs were blocking the people from seeing the fire, the limbs should have been cut the next day. That's it for me. I wouldn't even put a say nothing.
Any other reports? All right. I had a motion to adjourn. Mean adjourn.